We are live.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Transylvania County Board of Education. As we do before all of our meetings, we will have a time of invocation which will be led by Mr. Kevin Emme and then Courtney will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'm probably aging myself, but I'm a fan of classic rock from the 60s and 70s. So my radio is usually turned to Sirius XM Classic Rewind or Classic Vinyl. And on the way tonight, they were playing the Styx song Grand Illusion. And while I couldn't understand all the words to the song, and I'll have to look them up when I get home, the chorus was "We're all the same inside." And that made me reflect on the motto of Brea College, which is my alma mater, and it is, "God has made of one blood all peoples of the world." And I think at this time in our nation, when we seem to be more and more polarized, we need to keep our eyes on that common knowledge that we are all the same inside and that God did make all of us. And so we need to work together for common goals and to find common ground. So I would ask you to reflect on that tonight through prayer, or meditation, or just silence. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reeve of public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will call our meeting to order tonight and welcome everyone who is in the room and who are joining us online. We are continuing to adhere to the remote meeting statute from the General Assembly and the Governor's Guidelines for Public Gatherings. Hopefully, we're going to be able to move into a different way to do meetings very soon. We'll talk about that later. I will let everyone know that in the room are all board members are present, as well as Dr. McDarris, Ms. Hunter, and our attorney, Chris Campbell, is with us in the room tonight. So with that, we will move to our business items. And the first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any modifications?
No.
Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Mr. Jackson made the motion to approve the agenda. Got to have to work on these mute buttons sometimes, and it was seconded by Ms. Tomaker. So I will call for that vote. Courtney?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Marty? Where is Marty? Are you with us?
Yes.
Aye.
Kimsey? Mrs. Tawny? That's aye. That would be unanimous to work from the agenda that has been published. And the next item of business is public comment. Did we have any? No one submitted public comment to us tonight. So... Just working on some technical stuff here before we move forward. Is Mr. Griffin on the meeting with us? I said, are you on the meeting with us? I'm not seeing you on here. Okay. All right. So we will, we will turn the good news report over to Dr. McDarris.
All right. Thank you. I don't have a live link there, so let me refresh. It's okay, I can pull that up. We don't have the link with the pictures, however, I will be able to give the good news report for this evening. The week of May 3rd through 7th, 2021, is National Teacher Appreciation Week. Teachers change the lives of millions of children every day, and as we approach the end of this challenging school year, we know that our teachers have done more than ever before to continue daily education with virtual classrooms and in-person learning, all to ensure that every student has the tools they need to reach their full potential. Join us in celebrating our teachers and show them our thanks and appreciation. National School Principals' Day is observed nationally on May 1st each year, which was this past weekend, and is a time to thank the hardworking professionals whose leadership and dedication help provide the best education possible for students. From supporting student achievement, managing students, teachers, and staff, and meeting the expectations of parents, the jobs of school principals were often underestimated. Principals motivate others and help lead young people to a prosperous future. Please join us in saying thank you to each of the principals in our schools. Mike Kirsch at Brevard Elementary, Brian Abernathy, Brevard High School, Jeff Bailey, Brevard Middle School, Barbara Grimm, Davidson River School, Tanya Tredway, Piscatah Forest Elementary, Bob Dinsdale, Rosman Elementary, Jason Ormsby, Rosman High School, Scott Strickler, Rosman Middle School, Patrick Chapman, TC Henderson School of Science and Technology. National School Nurse Day is May 12th, 2021. School nurses serve as a critical health hub for students, helping to ready students for learning by managing complex chronic conditions, identifying and addressing mental health issues, promoting healthy behaviors, handling medical emergencies, and navigating through the COVID-19 pandemic by testing, tracking, and vaccinating school personnel. School nurses are essential for healthy kids, healthy schools, and healthy communities. Please join us in thanking our wonderful school nurses for all they do every day. Julie Hack, Ashley Owen, April Owenby, and Amy Parker. School Lunch Hero Day. Please join us in celebrating Friday, May 7th, as School Lunch Hero Day in our local schools and nationwide. Between preparing healthy meals, adhering to strict nutrition standards, navigating student food allergies, and offering service with a smile, our school nutrition professionals are true heroes. Please show your appreciation to your school nutrition team for all they do and thank them for meeting the challenge of keeping children fed at home and at school during the COVID pandemic. Speaking of school nutrition, school nutrition grants have been received during the COVID emergency. Director Carolyn Barton has reported that the Transylvania County School Nutrition Department has received more than $166,000 in grants for food and equipment to feed children during the 2020-2021 COVID emergency. Acoustic Credit Union, $3,000, coolers for food distribution. Talks Away Charities, $20,000 for emergency food cards. The Dairy Alliance, $3,500 for insulated carriers. No Kid Hungry, $3,500 for coolers. NCSU Cooperative Extension, the Rapid Response Grant of $4,000 a year, which is 2020 fresh produce, and also 2021 fresh produce, $2,000 a year. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, State Board of Education, the NSLP Equipment Assistance Grant, $130,013. In addition, Mrs. Barton is applying for a $10,000 Blue Zone Grant, thanks to Mrs. Barton for her work in securing the grants and to the grant providers for their support. Each year, the North Carolina Electric Cooperatives Organization awards Bright Ideas Grants to teachers for projects that improve classroom instruction and utilize innovative teaching methods. Since 1994, teachers in our state have received more than 13.6 million in Bright Ideas Grants from North Carolina's 26 electric cooperatives, making possible nearly 13,000 innovative projects that have reached over 2.7 million students. Our sponsoring cooperative, Haywood Electric, has invited Transylvania County teachers to apply for the grants again this year. We have information on our website for applying, but it's ncbrideideas.com. The early bird deadline is August 16th, and the final deadline is September 8th of this year. The Transylvania County Education Foundation will host a week-long pandemic-friendly version of The Taste of Transylvania this year. The foundation has partnered with a number of local restaurants, food trucks, wine and coffee shops, bars, and breweries to offer dine-in or takeout options on Tuesday, May 4th through Sunday, May 8th, May 9th, excuse me, with a portion of the sales benefiting the foundation. They also will host an online silent auction that will run the same dates as the dining options and offer a variety of items for bid. Proceeds will go to the Education Foundation's Creative Classroom Grants for Public Schools. For more information or to bid in the online auction, please visit their website. We have a link off of our website, Taste of Transylvania. There will be an option to donate directly by texting TCSF to 76278. As always, for many good news reports, please visit our social media outlets on the web, Facebook, Twitter, Flickr, Instagram, Youtubes, and we also have a smartphone app, and we also have the iTunes SoundCloud where you can listen to replays. And that is our good news report for this meeting. That will bring us into former students in the military. The board wishes to thank former students from Brevard High School, Rosman High School, and Davidson River School who are currently serving or have previously served in the U.S. military. We have a list of names that's recognized at every meeting and read aloud twice a year in recognition of Veterans Day and coming up on Memorial Day. Additional names will be included as they are received. I do not believe we have any new names for this meeting. Well, you see, we have a very impressive list, always interested in having new names added. And that brings us to the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's always good to hear that good news, and we're always proud to recognize those that have served in the military. Before we move to the consent agenda, I'm going to ask Mr. Jackson if you would flip your camera around so we can see you. All we're seeing is your initial right now. It's next to your microphone. Do you see it there? That little camera looking. All right. There you go. Thank you. If they're going to have to look at me, they'll have to look at you. So... They did not. So that will move us to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda items for tonight are the minutes from the April 19th meeting, the closed session minutes from April 19th, and the personnel report for May 3rd. So everyone had an opportunity to review those items?
Yes.
And if so, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know this is the time of year when we're hiring new people, and we have a lot of people resigning and either retiring, resigning, or moving on. And I know we've probably mentioned this before, but just for the public, do we do an exit interview? And just what does that consist of and what is part of that?
We, we do a follow-up interview with individuals who leave us. Some participate, most participate. Occasionally, we have some who choose not to, but we like to know the reason that they're leaving, if they're willing to divulge that to a certain limit. Many times, it's retirement. Sometimes it can be because his spouse has been relocated to another location. Sometimes it's because they themselves have found a situation in another school system in North Carolina that meets with their needs a little bit better, or perhaps they may pay higher. It could be a variety of reasons.
Well, the only way for me to even bring that up, somebody asked me that, said, "Do you know why your employees leave or why they don't want to stay?" And I said, "We do an exit interview, I know, but actually, I just want you to explain a little bit to the public, aware that we are concerned with it, and we do do it." Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. There's a motion that's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? I will call for the vote. Courtney?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Marty?
Yes.
Kimsey?
Aye.
Mrs. Tawny? That's aye. So that motion would pass unanimously. And then we will move from there over to our presentation about the bond.
Thank you. We do have Representatives Clark Nixon and Vanoy Construction to give a presentation on the Guaranteed Maximum Prize GMP-1 and an update on the school bond construction projects. A motion would be in order to approve the GMP-1 package for bid. The board's consideration, and I will be glad to turn my screen over to someone if someone tells me who they want me to turn it over to.
And let me, let me just, if I can, Dr. McDarris, give a little brief introduction. I appreciate Brian Walker and Jason Smith being here with us tonight from Vanoy Construction, and Chad Roberson from Clark Nixon is also here. Really going to be maybe a little bit more of a Vanoy Construction presentation rather than a Clark Nixon presentation, but I'm sure Chad will, will chime in with his two cents worth from time to time also. And let me, let me clarify one other thing before I turn it over to Jason Smith. This motion would be to approve the GMP-1 package as bid, not for bid. They have gotten bids for these things. So having said that, I will turn that over to Jason Smith and Dr. McDarris. If you will give control to Jason, he'll, he'll move on from there.
All right. Now I got to figure out how to share my screen.
Do you see a little in the bottom right-hand corner, Jason? Is that now?
Yep. All right. Can you see it?
Not yet. Did you pick a screen to present?
I thought so.
Here we go. Just a little slow. Y'all must have dial-up internet at Vanoy, Jason.
I'm running the information back and forth. You just don't see me.
Oh, okay.
All right. So, and I think this aligns with the package that we sent through to you, Norris. And so what we, what we have here is GMP-1. And for those of you that may or may not remember, GMP-1 is, is needed for the projects in order for the schedule to be maintained to get started in August. Given that the final bid packages are going out for bid next month, and the approval from, the expected approval from the board and the county won't be coming until the August timeframe, materials were needed to be ordered at both locations so that they can be procured and be ready to hit the job site for installations in August. That will help us maintain the project schedule. So what you'll have here, real quick, this is the summary of GMP-1. We have broken it down for the items that are needed at Rosman and the items that are needed at Brevard. Can y'all see that? I'm not sure how my dual monitors affects the size of it, but I think you may also have a copy of it. Is it legible?
It's a little small, but we do have a copy.
Yes. Yes. Thank goodness we have a copy.
Does that help?
That's, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. So just real quick going through the items. At Rosman, some of the items that are needed to be procured early are, you'll see under the general requirements phasing and logistics. That is the emergency egress temporary scaffold stair that will be required to allow the demolition of the buildings to occur. That scaffold stair will maintain access to both of the upper floors in Building 3 to allow a second means of egress out of the building in life safety need.
Now, Jason, you're going to have to explain what Building 3 is, because those...
Well, Chad, you may have to correct me. The Building 3 is the building that the cafeteria and the science labs are in on the upper floor.
Exactly.
So that will maintain access out, out of that building while we're under construction, so that we can demolish and build the new building in its place. So it's expected to be there for roughly two years as a means of egress for emergency needs.
So if you want to think of it this way, because the bell tower that we call the bell tower is, is coming down, that's going to be basically the bell tower for two years.
Correct. The second item at Rosman that we will be procuring early are some doors, frames, and hardware that are needed into the temporary admin spaces, as well as temporary doors to control access into the area that is being demolished. So that will keep students and staff in, out of the area that's being demolished. Next, at Rosman, you enter the HVAC and mechanical systems allowance. That is for a temporary 500-gallon fuel oil tank. In order to demolish and build new, the current underground tank has to be removed. So this temporary tank will be installed and piped in to feed the equipment that provides heat for the facility and whatever else that requires fuel. That is a purchase of a tank because it was much more cost-effective than renting a tank for two years. And then lastly, the electrical systems associated with adding some of these doors and the temporary stair scaffold, there are modifications to emergency lighting, there's modifications to exit signage to lead people out of the building, and that's what the electrical system work is, procuring those fixtures, if you will, so that they can arrive in time. Switching over to Brevard, you have a similar need for doors, frames, and hardware. A little bit different than Rosman, those doors, frames, and hardware are permanent doors that are being installed in the gymnasium, because the pre-work area to allow the demolition to occur there builds new electrical rooms. There's new mechanical rooms that are being installed, and as well as locker room renovations that are being done in the pre-work phase. You'll see a flooring allowance, and what that is, in these same renovated areas, there are some resilient flooring products, as well as tile products that get installed in the restroom. And currently, these are an allowance as the final design selections are being made. We have included money at a unit price rate based on the quantities that are necessary to cover that material ordered. It's my understanding, Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, there's some meetings in May to nail down those selections.
That's correct.
Other items, you'll see the specialties. What those are are the accessories, and these are predominantly grab bars, benches, the items that are furnishings to go into the new locker room. So those items are needed to complete those spaces to be used, toilet partitions, toilet paper dispensers, all the items that we are furnishing and that are not owner-furnished, contractor-installed. Plumbing systems include all of the plumbing fixtures that are needed in these spaces. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Mechanical systems, we have an allowance in here currently. There's still some manufacturers that have not yet responded to the bid invitation that we're expecting this week. We presented an allowance that we will, should be able to come in less than, based on the feedback we've received. These are some of the more long lead time items of this phase, such as boilers, split system air condition, diffusers and grills. So this, that is very critical information and critical items to start the lead time now so that they can arrive in the August and September timeframe. Last but not least are the electrical systems. There are some exit signs similar to Rosman, however, there are some electrical gear requirements. We are relocating panels as part of this pre-work phase, so there is electrical gear that has to be procured. Electrical gear is another item that has traditionally long lead times, that has only been made longer as we've dealt with COVID and shortages and other issues related to that in our industry. In addition to those items, there are several lights that are ordered as part of this package. And lights typically have a pretty long lead time as well. So that is the scope of work that is being procured. Again, the procurement of these items is needed to maintain the schedule. This is a material-only purchase, three subcontractors. The actual receipt, installation, and warrant of the work will be part of GMP-2. So these items are basically being purchased and will be delivered to the successful contractor on GMP-2. Are there any questions? And there's the total amount. You guys have the hard copy for the items that are being purchased. Chad, do you have anything to add, or Norris?
Nope. Good job.
I think I'm good. Great, great job, Jason.
Do you want me to stop presenting?
It's okay. You can leave it there.
Yeah, let's keep it up in case the board has some questions about the numbers. Included in this package behind the summary is bid tabulations, a little more detail of where the summary came from. And Jason, I believe you said we got at least three bids on everything except the scaffolding, which is just a rental anyway. So is that correct?
That is correct. So what, behind the summary page, you know, the first nine or so pages is strictly the breakdown for Brevard. So you'll see the Brevard-only summary, followed by the estimate detail, which is highlighting each of these individual items that we just showed you that are pulled forward to the summary page. You can see some of the items that are being ordered. Mirrors, paper towel dispensers, shelves, toilet partitions, sanitary napkin disposals, grab bars, et cetera, et cetera. You can see all of the plumbing equipment that is being purchased, floor drains, water coolers, backflows, showers, water closets, water heaters, recirculating pumps. Mechanical systems has a significant amount. It's got two boilers, it's got several exhaust fans, louvers, hot water pumps, VFEs, diffusers, the temporary fan coil unit to supply air to the space. And then you'll see the electrical breakdown, fixtures, occupancy sensors, disconnects, search protection devices, et cetera, as well as the fire alarm devices that are needed. Behind that, what you'll see are the bid tabs. So we've provided for each of the items, the bid tabs for. So like right here, doors, frames, and hardware, you'll see that we had three bids that were received, one from Tremble, one from Cook &amp; Borman, one from Premier. And the item that you'll see referenced as in our estimate is the low bidder of Tremble Company. So we have a sheet of that for the doors, frames, and hardware. We do not have a bid tab yet for the tile and flooring, again, because we're waiting on selections. So this is an allowance that will be resolved after those selections. Miscellaneous specialties, we received four bids and took the low bid from Noble Specialty. Come on, babe. Plumbing, we got three bids and we took the low bid from SK MES. HVAC, again, is an allowance as we wait on some of these last few manufacturers to provide their pricing. And then electrical, we got three bids and took the low bid from Emery Electric. All of these subcontractors have been, gone through the pre-qualification process, and they will be participating in GMP-2. Then behind that is the same information for Rosman. The Rosman summary sheet, followed by the estimate detail as to what all is being purchased, and then the same bid tabs. Here is the scaffold stair. Again, this is a rental, and we only had one person respond to the bid invite after the scaffold. We have the doors, frames, and hardware. Again, we had three bids and took the low bid from Tremble. Behind that, you will provide, you'll find the fuel oil tank. And so everybody understands what you'll see here is, we reached out to, we got prices back from two vendors. back from two vendors. Both of them priced rentals versus a purchase, versus a purchase. So what you'll see here is a rental cost for two years and then a purchase, a rental cost for two years and a purchase. So we went with the low bid, the most cost effective manner to be able to provide fuel oil to the school was to purchase a single 500 gallon tank instead of renting it for two years. So we went with the United Rentals purchase price. And then lastly, we had three electrical quotes from the same vendors and we took the low bidder from Haynes Electric and used their pricing in our proposal. Any questions? Sorry.
Are the bidders local that you've selected or they come from somewhere else?
Well, there, you know, as far as the pre-qualification process, they will come from all over. The majority of these vendors are pretty much Western North Carolina contractors that responded to GMP one.
Any other questions? I think you've done an excellent job of the presentation and explaining it.
Tony.
Yes, sir.
Do we have the money? Or is it, what's the status of the funds to pay for this?
So this presentation will be made, go ahead, Norris.
I'm sorry. We, the, the funds are available reserved in county fund balance. We've spent not quite $3 million to date and the county reserve $6 million or so out of their fund balance to pay for expenses until they issued the bond. So we, the funds are available out of their reserve.
However, this presentation will be made to the commissioners at their next meeting. Is that correct?
It will, Monday at four o'clock.
Yes. And then they will have the opportunity to move forward with those funds. It's there, but they want to be a part of making the decision about moving forward with the GMP one. Are there other questions? So just so I can be sure, I know you said it, but I'm going to ask again to just clarify that the bids are already there. So other than the ones that you mentioned specifically that we're waiting for, which we hope to come in under the estimate shown here, this has already been asked, is that correct?
That is correct. And Mr. Campbell may need to chime in on this, but I think it's, it is the change order for that dollar amount that would be approved by the board. Am I correct in that? This is my first rodeo on this, so.
That is, board members, you have a copy of AIA document G701-2017. It's the one that's got the red emblem for the American Institute of Architects at the top of it. So this is the mechanism by which the GMPs, both number one and number two, will be approved. And this specific document refers to an exhibit A for GMP number one. That exhibit A is going to be the documents that Mr. Smith just did such a good job reviewing with you. So that will be exhibit A to the change order document specifying what the GMP covers. And that'll be executed by the Board of Education, by Vanoy and by the architects. And of course, that will not be a valid document until the county approves it because since this is a bond issuance and this is a multi-year financial commitment, the county by law does have to approve GMP one and GMP two. But certainly all of this is within the budget that has already been approved by your county commissioners. And the, Mr. Smith has done a good job of articulating why we need to buy materials in advance. So that is correct. That'll be the document. It will be signed with apologies. I saw two small typos in it, but Mr. Robertson is fixing those for us as we speak. So we'll have a document for the chair to sign shortly. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So our motion would be to approve the change order in order to establish a GMP one?
I believe so.
I'm not going now. Okay, great. Mr. Kibben, I'm sorry, would you repeat your question?
So the motion would need to be then that we approve the change order in order to establish a contractual GMP one prize.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I so move.
Did you get that, Jenny?
It was correct. It was to approve change order, the change order number one to the contract with Vanoy in order to establish GMP number one.
Is the price 539,164? Is that the price we're talking about?
That is. That is the amount that's been set aside for the equipment. It does include a couple of allowances because they didn't have full bids back. So they'll actually be hard numbers once those amounts are known for sure. But yes, this amount comports with the document that Vanoy just went over to the dollar. Yes, sir.
Jason, this is Courtney. Will we have those hard numbers by the time that we present to the commissioners next week?
We're hoping so. And so everybody understands, we've received numbers, these numbers will not go up. What it is, there are several, when you, when you purchase a boiler, there are multiple manufacturers for a boiler. And I'm just using that for instance. So we've received information as to a cost of one of those boilers and are waiting on costs from other manufacturers to make sure we're getting the most cost effective boiler for the project. So these numbers will buy, the numbers won't go up because we've received the information that we can get a boiler and a temporary fan coil unit, et cetera, based on one model. And we're waiting on competitors so that we can have the lowest price that is an acceptable manufacturer from the design.
As long as those numbers aren't going to be going up, then that's one thing that we want to make sure the commissioners understand on that.
Correct. They will not go up. They can come down. This is a worst case scenario, if you will. The number will not go up.
So if the numbers have to come down, then once we get those, will we have to change the document then?
No, it would not be, in my opinion, we'd have to change the document because the document contains allowances. That might, it will simply then be available for bricks and mortar in GMP number two.
So the allowances would be reconciled in GMP two?
That's exactly right.
And I'm sure you went over it and I was feverishly taking notes, but I didn't get it all. If you would just let us know again, you don't have to do it right now, but which one of those are we doing the allowances for or tell me where to find that again?
So it is the flooring allowance, item number 18. And in that is materials for both tile, like hard tile, ceramic tile in the locker rooms and also resilient flooring. There's some VCT vinyl selection, the vinyl composition tile. And the other item is number 27, the HVAC and mechanical systems allowance. Again, these are, I know there's a number in the one for Rosman. However, that is not an allowance, only the item for Brevard is an allowance because the item from Rosman is solely that fuel oil tank that we did show you the bids for. So it's the $20,000 number and the $175,000 number.
Thank you. I think I actually had right some of that now. Sorry about that.
And Mr. Smith, Mr. Robertson, I might suggest one of you might want to do a simple memo to the county manager, just explaining those two allowances and especially the point you made earlier about the fact that that price will not go up, but it could come down.
I think Norris, you and I have talked about, did you draft something up that I saw?
Well, I did indicate, I did speak to the allowances in the agenda item description that I sent to the county manager and that the board has in their hands. And what I can do is amend that document and send that to her and explain that the prices could go down. And if they do go down, they would be reconciled in GMP two rather than go back and change the change order. I'll add that blurb to what I've sent her.
That would be great. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Just one comment from me again. Really excited about this. And I know the voters in this county are excited about it because they approved it. That's what they want to see for our kids. So we're just all excited together. Thank you for all the work, folks.
We're excited too.
I am going to take just a moment to share something good that I heard. We talked a little bit last week, I mean, at our last meeting about Hendersonville and how they were some savings there. And I happened to talk to a commissioner about that. And his first suggestion was that we hire Vanoy and be sure that we are working with them. So I thought that was a compliment that I wanted to share.
It's down real low.
May I just say that again? I was just going to give a, share a compliment. I heard, we talked last meeting about Hendersonville and how some money savings had been seen there. And I happened to speak to a commissioner from Henderson County and they said, one of the first things we should do is be sure we were working with Vanoy. And so I just wanted to share that compliment to them. We do know that we are working with the best, Clark Nixon and Vanoy. And we are so excited where we're at and all the work that you have done on our behalf on this project. And we're, like Marty said, very excited to be moving forward. And of course, everything Norris and all our team of folks have done here to get us to this place. So there's a motion has been made and properly seconded. So if there's no further discussion, I will call for that vote. Courtney?
Aye.
Marty?
Yes.
Ron?
Aye.
Kimzy?
Yes.
This is Tony. Yes. So that would pass unanimously. So that moves us to the approval of GMP one and we will take this presentation to the commissioners at next week and continue to move the project forward. Thank you all so very, very much. You are welcome to stay with us if you'd like for the rest of the evening, but if you have something else you think you need to be doing, we certainly understand if you want to leave.
If y'all want to hang around for the budget update, you'll see why I'm so hard on you all the time.
I will need to screen back though. One thing I do need to screen back.
I will vouch for that Norris is hard on us all the time.
Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the hard work getting this thing turned around in the timeframe that you did.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Norris, can I ask a question before we skip out away from bond? Because I think this is the last time we're talking about it. Did I see that we have comments back from the Department of Insurance already? I meant to ask that before they got off the.
Yes, ma'am. You did see that we've got, and that's part of my agenda item description to the county manager that I sent you folks. We have gotten comments back. There were 45 comments for Rosman, 28 comments for Brevard. The majority of those comments were just boilerplate comments such as be sure to include such and such in your cut sheets, which of course you're not going to have until the project starts. Be sure that such and such is done with your ass bills, those kinds of things. Do have, we had some comments about doors and door hardware, very easily addressable comments that they returned to us. And I'm still pretty confident, Clark Nixon is supposed to get those back by May the 13th. And I feel pretty confident that they'll have those comments submitted and we'll have an approval somewhere around June 15th or so forth. That's a big hurdle.
And that's all the comments we'll get?
That, that would be all the comments that we would get from the Department of Insurance. Now we'll obviously still have county inspections and fire marshal inspections throughout the construction process, but in terms of Department of Insurance, that'll be all the comments we'll be getting from them.
Norris, I'm going to ask before Ron does, when are we going to put the shovel in the dirt?
Well, again, if all goes as planned, notice the seed, the first week in August, they'll start erecting construction fencing, scaffolding, for instance, the emergency egress scaffolding that Jason talked about earlier at Rosman. They'll start preparing construction parking, materials, lay down areas, they'll pull in their construction trailers and such, start getting permits and those kinds of things. And hopefully we'll actually start, well, I don't know if shovels in the dirt's the right term, starting the wrecking ball swinging September, the first week in September or so. It'll take four to five weeks to get everything staged and ready to go before we'll actually start seeing the big equipment out there. It'll go by quick.
It's like Christmas club.
And we are, in the meantime, we're busy talking about temporary offices at Rosman, talking about traffic patterns at Brevard, talking about where we're going to move things and when we're going to move things and who we're going to move and, and where to put telephone lines and all, all kinds of things like that. So a lot of, lot of pre-work on our part to do before then also. So there'll be lots of activity going on over the next few months.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to move on. Thank, I forgot to ask that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. On April 26th, the county manager presented her recommendation for the 2021, 2022 local budget to the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Bargher and I will give you an update. I know he has some information to share and I will pull up an updated Fund II summary based on that. I will note that from the state side, they really have not, I'm sure they're working on things behind the scenes, perhaps in caucus or something, but we've not really heard anything on the state budget anytime recently. I don't think Mr. Bargher's heard anything either, but I will pull up the Fund II balance changes and I will turn it over to Mr. Bargher for any corrections and comments.
And thank you, Dr. McDaris. These are the items that the county manager recommended in her budget presented to the commissioners. As you can see, item number one, she is proposing to be held in reserve. As you can see, item number one, she is proposing to be held in reserve until the state legislature votes on pay raises, similar to what they've done in the past. The amount that is indicated held in reserve is 2%. Obviously, we don't know what that actual amount is going to be, but that's something that we need to consider if those pay raises are more than 2%. She did include an increase in the retirement rate. Again, don't know if that is going to happen. That's just a pure guess on my part. Health insurance increase, she included that, pure guess on my part. And then the adjustment for the SRO increases, which is, which is a wash, we'll get that $32,000 increase, but then we'll turn around and write a check back out to the county for that $32,000 also for that, for a total of $57,549. The items that were not included in our recommendation, again, most of the pay increase, the supplement rate increase to nine and a half percent, 10% for veteran teachers. One that concerns me probably the most, the certified supplement increase to cover pay increases. That's the amount of money that it would take just to keep the supplement where it is today based on pay increases.
Excuse me, Norris. Why does she want to cut our teachers' pay? All we've heard from people across the state and the country is how important teachers have been during this time, being in school, working at home, doing more work than most of us could even imagine. If you've never been between the walls, you just don't understand. So why would she want to cut the most important part of Transylvania County school system? The schools don't operate without teachers, bottom line. So what was the explanation for that? Or was there an explanation?
I can't answer that question, Mr. Griffin.
Okay. I'm just being, so I apologize. I know that.
Let me, let me just add in here real quick, Marty. I think that, if you could turn your speaker down just a little. I believe at the recommend, at the time of the recommendation, the 2% is what is being projected for state employees is where the 2% came from. I understand and we all know that that doesn't mean that will be what could happen as an increase for teachers because nothing has come from the legislature yet for that. But I believe that's where that number came from. There is a project, some talk around state employees receiving a 2% increase.
Well, you're talking about a state number. I'm talking about the local number, the one that is completely controlled by the county commissioners is a local number. We're not talking about what's statewide, which we're going to need too, but we're talking about just local.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you were talking about where the, what she was talking about. Are you talking about the 87,384? Okay. So let me, let me say on that amount, I have sent an email and I think I copied it and sent it to all of y'all to the Commissioner Chapel. Sorry, I couldn't get that out. As Norris helped me explain that we need that money so that we can keep our supplements at the current rate that they are. So I also asked Commissioner Chapel for them to consider that if there was a, more of a raise than 2%, that we would have to be coming back to them for that additional money as well as additional money. Because again, there would need to be an increase to cover the supplement that we already have. I know that's not exactly what you're addressing, Marty, but just for that particular amount. So I'm, I've done that and he sent me an email late this afternoon that I didn't forward on to everybody, that he had sent those emails to the county manager. And they are having budget discussions, I believe that they're meeting Monday night also.
And to a certain extent, number five and number one are linked. The more number one is, the more number five will be, the less number one is, the less number five will be because it's depending on what that pay raise is.
If I could jump in there to piggyback on what Mr. Barker said, for example, if it were a 2% raise and that 104, 543 is held in reserve, then based on a 2% at the current supplement rate, we would need an additional approximately, correct me on my math if I'm wrong, Norris, an approximately 34,900 in the supplement just to maintain the current rate. Is that a good approximate?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
That's one way you can think of it.
Well, what I don't understand is, maybe Chris can explain this. Law says we have to pay our teachers this amount of money. And now we're talking about that we may have to go searching for money to meet the requirements of the law. Chris, can you, can you explain to the good old country boy why this is the way it is?
We certainly have two categories of funds. We've got state funds that we use to pay in a teacher scale at the state level that we use to pay our teachers and certified employees. And then we've got the local supplement. The local supplement is purely a creature of the local budget, what the school district has available and what the county commissioners fund to the school district. So you are correct that if we are paying somebody out of local funds and the supplement is one way in which we do that, there's a pay increase, we've got to match that with the supplement. The choices by law are pretty straightforward. Either the county funds it, we come up with it some other way, or we have to reduce that supplement because of a lack of funds. And that's not a legal issue, that's a political issue of what the teachers were promised and whether or not the correct funding. All right. Where did you lose me now? Now, the bottom line was again, the county comes up with the money, the school board has to find it somewhere else, or worst case scenario would be the board would have to look at reducing the supplement amount across the board because the board wasn't provided with sufficient funds to cover those increases.
Well, I will say, I hope the commissioners will reconsider a number of these items at their meeting on Monday afternoon. I am distressed that the manager has only recommended less than one half of 1% increase in budgeted funds for us in a year in which their sales tax revenue exceeded their expectations, in which they added, again, I believe a million dollars or more to the fund balance. Fact that they have already collected to date $12 million based on the 10 and a half percent, 10 and a half cent tax increase that the voters improved. I don't see why. Well, let me just think, say that I do not think our budget requests were unreasonable and I think they should be fully funded.
You know what's ironic, Ron, is exactly what you said. They made money during the pandemic and they all said one of the most important parts of us getting through the pandemic and making our economy better was having kids in the school. Even though I disagreed with that, to this day I still disagree with it. But we basically made the county money and now they're refusing, or excuse me, the county manager has not put that into their plan, how responsible we have been. And you know, this is unusual. Look across the country, you don't see people making money during the pandemic, but Transylvania County did. That's kind of ironic. And now the place where you need to spend it is on the teachers and the education in this county. And we seem to be forgotten, they don't want to put money where their mouth is. I know I'm, I know I'm binging, but it just, I'm binging for the kids and our educators in this county. To me, that's, well, you folks know how important that is. I've spent a lifetime.
And as I said, I strongly hope that the commissioners will reconsider some of those issues at their meeting Monday afternoon.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Ron, I tend to agree with most of what you said, except the 6 million, it's 12 million. They've done it for two years.
Right, 6 million per year.
Right. And on the thing, I have not been happy about that at all. At the very least, that money should be somewhere in an interest-bearing account of some kind making money because that specifically was put in place for the school board when they passed that 10 and a half cents. And my understanding that this year, meaning tax year 2020, that they've used that money for other things, but that there is the 6 million from 2019 is in, somewhere in an account, but it was not invested in anyway. To me, that's very bad. Let's say it that way on the thing.
Thank you, Kimzie. Thank you, Ron, for your input. It's been very good. Thank you.
Yeah. And I don't know what to do about the rest of this stuff. We cannot, we cannot pay our locally funded teachers less than state. And Chris, is, is that the law, did you say?
So we do pay our teachers on the state salary schedule regardless of whether it's from local funds or state funds. The law on a supplement is that that is over and above what they are guaranteed by statute. We still have an obligation to pay that supplement. I'm just saying, let's say we had a worst case scenario where we had a true, you know, economic depression, the option available to a board is the board can decrease the supplement, only the supplement part, if they did not have the funds. But Mr. Jackson, that's a worst case scenario.
And of course, when you get to the supplement, that's been paid for a number of years. And I would say that certainly the teachers are expecting it at this point and it's kind of a promise at this point that they get that. Whether we increase the supplement or not is another, another, another discussion.
And if I could say one last thing too, it is in the nature of a non-discretionary increase. And I think that's important to remember because Norris does a good job of talking about what are discretionary and non-discretionary increases. Well, once a county agrees to provide a supplement for schoolteachers in that county, they know there are going to be increases to their pay and that there will be corresponding increases to their supplement. So this is very much like health insurance or retirement. These are hard costs that are owed to the teachers. It's not something that the board wishes it could do, it's something the board has a legal obligation to do and the county knows that.
Right. I was sitting here wondering, Tony and I had a little conversation today, if it wouldn't be appropriate that Tony and our Ron and our Norris arrange some kind of a meeting, perhaps with Jason and Jamie and what's his name, Jeffrey? Is it Jeff? Jonathan?
Jonathan.
Before next Monday and see if you can kind of hash this thing out a little bit. You know, it's, it's a hard thing. We can do it in front, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we can go in there Monday night and hack at them on this thing, but it would be cooler if we did it ahead of time. That's, that's my comment on the thing.
Go ahead.
I suspect that the increase in the supplement is gone for this year, but the rest of it, I think, I think we have a good case to say that we need this. It's got to be.
And I, I think Tony has reached out to the chairman of the commissioners with those concerns and hopefully there will be some discussion before Monday's meeting.
Courtney, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's ironic that we are talking about this during teacher appreciation week, that it's something that we don't, you know, it's disheartening to see them too, that, you know, we can't even get the instructional supplies, some of those funds that were cut. And I just want to stress how much money that teachers spend in their classrooms every single year. So when we don't have those educational supplies coming into the schools and now we're talking about the possibility of that, that supplement and that we have to find a way to make sure that we can at least keep where we're at. And I don't want that to get out there either, that, you know, that pay is going to be cut for next year or anything. I don't want that to get out there at all. So because that's not what, that's not what the school board is trying to do here. Again, I just think that it's ironic when we're out there as board members, as parents, as community members, saying thank you to our teachers for everything that they're doing this year and to our principals, and then we're having this conversation tonight. It's just, it's a hard conversation to have.
It's not good.
The words thank you, and I've said I don't know how many times to our teachers, the words thank you is to not put food on the table, gas in your car, make your house payments. That's where you show appreciation, when you put the money where your mouth is and say thank you for the job you've done, a double job. And now, not only have they done a double job, they're also getting ready to teach summer school. And the good thing about this county, I asked last meeting, did we have enough summer school teachers? And we've got them all positions filled as far as I know. So they're just rolling off of the, probably the year and a half of the worst you could teach in, they're rolling off with two weeks break and going to be right back in the classroom during their job. And we're just saying, well, we just don't know whether you're worth it. That hurts. That hurts.
I don't think, we, we're not saying that, Marty. I think, let's, I understand your frustration completely, but I think we are, we, what we're saying is, we do want to do this and we want to move forward in a way where we can, we're going to make this happen. We're going to make this happen. We want to be sure that while we've, we've talked about the possibilities of what might is something we have to consider if that does, if that part of the funding don't come in, that I believe, I mean, I can't speak and we haven't had a vote on it, but I believe from hearing just what comments I've heard tonight, the, we're going to find a way to make that happen. So in no way do we want anybody who's listening to this meeting to in any way have a fear that there, that there needs to be a way that we won't work to make that happen. But when we do that, it affects something else potentially. So that's where I think we need to continue to talk to the commissioners this week. And like I said, I've already reached out to the chair on, on those two issues particularly pertaining to raises, percentages and the supplement. And I'm more than happy to reach out to him and see if we can have a meeting between whomever we need to do so that we can be sure that they understand our concerns and why we're doing it and provide any information that they need so that they can understand in particular those two items, but not only those two items, but anything of the rest of the budget request.
Yeah, well, let me say this. One thing to do the emails, but as you know, it's an entirely different thing when you're sitting eye to eye. And that's the value of a meeting. And I endorse Courtney's comment about cutting the supply situation. My wife is a teacher. I can't tell you how many dollars we spent on, on supplies and that sort of thing. We would go to garage sales and things like that. She was a reading teacher and we picked up reading material. The Dr. Seuss books were very much in demand, we discovered, or she discovered. And so we would go around and get the Dr. Seuss books and of course, give them to the students as a, as a means of handsome reading on the thing. So I'm not in favor of cutting that when we can find a way. I think one of the things we can do, and Tony, we talked about that today, is we can look at other items on the budget that maybe we haven't spent all the money in years past and maybe we can cut those to pick up some money for those kinds of things. to pick up some money for those kinds of things. That's going to take some work, unfortunately, on your part, Norris. And you and I talked about that once before. But I agree, we need to make this, this happen like we're talking about tonight. And I could see a mass exodus if we were to not pay the supplement or something like that. So we don't want that. But I do think that an eye-to-eye meeting is definitely in order. And I don't know who besides Jason to say ought to be in it, maybe David Guas, I don't know. Okay?
Let me just say that I will contact him in the morning and see who is the best way to have that meeting so that we can let them know what we're talking about, if he thinks it would be better among us and some staff members, or how we feel would be best to have the opportunity to present what our main biggest concern is. But again, let me just say again, so that we're sure that nobody is saying that teachers need to anticipate any kind of cut in the supplement. When we get to talking about this and we get concerned about it, I just want to be sure, because we hear everything and not just a piece of what's being said tonight. And we're not ready for this part of it tonight, but as we move forward and we see what actually we're able to come to as what we will receive on the local level, if there are changes, how those will be reflected, Norris and Dr. McDarris will bring those recommendations back to us so that we can review those and decide what we're going to do on what, after we are determined what we actually receive in local funds. Norris, would you also, as we're talking through and making connections with the commissioners, see from them the capital budget? All that was said at the meeting was that it was slightly more than last year, and I think the slightly is very small amount. But if you could just get that, so you can see exactly what that is, I would appreciate it. We'd appreciate it. What else on budget? Okay, don't think we have anything we need to vote on that, on that particular item tonight. So that will move us on. Unless Norris has something else he needs from us.
I do not. Chad just forwarded the change order with the typo corrections in it, and I have forwarded that to Dr. McDarris and Jenny and Board Chair. So we should be good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to federal programs. Notice of intent to apply. Transylvania County Schools has given public notice of several applications for federal grants that have been or will be submitted within the next 30 days. Federal Programs Director Audrey Renaud is here with us to provide an overview of the federal programs. And I will pull up anything that she asked me to pull up, and I will turn it over to Ms. Renaud.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. It's great to be with you this evening and to share some information. It is spring, and this is the time of year that we apply for our federal grants. Of course, you know, it takes several pots of money. We have our state funding, our local funding, and we have our federal funding. And it really is difficult whenever we take a cut in any of those three programs or those pots of money. So I'm going to go over an overview. Please ask questions as we go through this. Dr. McDarris, you go to the next slide? Right there. So when we look at our title allotments, we have Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. And you can see a brief description of those, those title areas there. I won't read those to you, but just so you have kind of a large overview, Title I is to provide a fair and equitable, high-quality education and close achievement gaps for our children. So it's to level the playing field. And we use our Title I funding basically in our elementary schools. Our Title II funds, when we get that money, that is, don't go anywhere yet, Dr. McDarris, that is for preparing our teachers, recruiting, training, our administrators and our teachers, because we know when we have quality teachers and administrators, that that has a direct impact on the proficiency and the growth of our student performance. Title III is for our ELLs, that's our English Language Learners. And then Title III is three pots that we look at different things, and that's for a well-rounded education to support safe and healthy students and the effective use of technology. So that gives you a big picture to kind of keep in mind as we go to the next slide, next slide, Dr. McDarris. On this slide, I tried to give you lots of information, maybe too much. But where you see the question marks, that is where at this time of year, I would be looking at the ESSR report that comes from Child Nutrition that is based on our free and reduced numbers. And Dr. McDarris has spoken to you a couple of times about the fact that our free and reduced applications are just not a true representation of what we normally have, and not a true representation of the need of our community. So I took the numbers and the percentages you see from 1920, and then last year, 2021, and 2122, this is where I would look at March, April, or May, and see which of those numbers gave a better representation. Because our numbers are lower this year, right now, we're going to be able to use our 2021 numbers. So that means we're hoping, right, to get the same amount of funding. We certainly do not want to take a decrease in funding in our federal programs. So that's why you see question marks there. I will just be using the 2021 data when I apply in the next couple weeks for our federal programs. You go to the next slide, Dr. McDarris. So this gives you an idea. This is what we received this year minus the carryover, and that's what we're hoping for. So you see across the top, Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. That top row is what we are hoping that we are able to get this year. At this point, we don't know what our carryover is. There may not be any carryover, but the carryover would be that unused portion from this year that would just roll over into those pots for next year. Go to the next slide, Dr. McDarris. So then when you look at all of that funding that comes in, that number looks like a large number, but it really is not. So I've broken it down by school, and you can see, and because we give that Title I funding to our elementary schools, that's why you only see the elementary schools listed there. And when you see in the next column, the percentage of low income, that is based on free and reduced lunch applications. It is critical that our parents fill out those free and reduced lunch applications because it has such a big impact on our federal applications whenever we look at our grants. In the third column, you see the number of low income, and that comes directly from the number of free and reduced lunch applications that are turned into us by school. And you see the total number, and I divide that into the total amount to get a per pupil allotment. Now, when you see that per pupil allotment and the total school allowance, that looks like a pretty good amount of money. But when that breaks down, most of that goes to teachers. A little bit goes to supplies and materials. But because of federal programs and the connection that we need to have with our parents and our parent involvement, because we know it's a partnership between our parents, our school, our children coming together. So you see parent involvement allotment there. The minimum that we can give is a 1%, but we gave a 1.5% because you can see, if you take TC Henderson, they only get $1,500. That's not a lot of money. So then you see the total across the top, take TC, for example, that's $99,000. But all of that $99,000 doesn't go to the school in spendable funds, but it is supplies and materials, parent involvement, and then teacher allocation. Go to the next slide, Dr. McDarris. We also have our ESAR funding, which I know Dr. McDarris has mentioned that a little bit, too, but I just wanted to put that up there because this is actually due this week. And you can see ESAR II is 3.2 million, and it has 14 allowable uses. ESAR III is 7.3 million with 20%, which is 1.4% that's mandated to go towards learning gaps, and there's 12 allowable uses. These funds are not for projects, like we can't use it in conjunction with our bond that we're getting in order to build in our schools. This is completely separate. Is it an allowable use? And on ESAR II, there's 14. On ESAR III, there's 12. Is it an allowable use that we want to spend it for? Is it needed due to the spread of COVID? Is it needed in the prevention of COVID? And is it needed in response to COVID? And when we look at those allowable uses, even though it might be allowable, is it necessary and is it reasonable? So all of that plays into it when you look at, you know, all that we're applying for. And honestly, when you look at 7.3 million, your first response is, oh, my goodness, that's a lot of money. But can I tell you that we have had groups of people coming together to look at and prioritizing what our biggest needs are? And we could, we could use much more than that just to meet our basic needs. You go to the next slide, Dr. McDarris. Other federal grants that we're going to be applying for or have is McKinney-Vento, and that's our homeless grant. And you can see that's $29,000. That's not a tremendous amount. That goes for a person. Carl Perkins is 62, 409. That goes for a person and a half. And then our IDEA is our special education grants, and that's for students ages 3 to 21. You can see that amount. Most of that money goes for teachers, just like with our Title I funding. That pays for 15 to 17 teachers, and we need that. So all of these grants have specific guidelines that we have to follow for the application and for the use of it. And Dr. McDarris signs off on all of our grants, and I know that with your consensus, he will continue to sign off on all of those grants. You go to the next slide, Dr. McDarris. All of the grants that we write all circle around our mission statement, our goals, and our values. And you know that all of our mission goals, values, it all centers around what's doing the best thing for our kids. And you go to the next one, Dr. McDarris. So in a nutshell, this is just kind of a visual for you. So we get the money, and whether it's programs, technology, software, hardware, growing our principals, our teachers, our staff, hiring quality people to begin with, partnering with our community and our families, because that's critical, and then looking at assessments and using assessment data to drive our instruction. You can see in the middle of that, it all centers around our children and what's doing the right thing for our children in order to meet their needs and make them productive citizens. What questions do you have for me?
Audrey, if you would, I think it would be beneficial if you would send the board the allowable uses for the ESAR II and ESAR III funds.
I certainly will. I'll be happy to do that. I know Dr. McDarris went over those, so I did not include those. But I will be happy to send you those. And it's different, again, there's 14 allowable expenses on ESAR II, and I'll be happy to go, I can read through that if you'd like to and give you a brief synopsis, or we can discuss it at another time. But I'll be happy to send that to the board.
Yeah, if you would send it, and then if necessary, we'll discuss it further. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on what Ms. Renaud said, and she'll pull that together, but you can categorize it in general terms as in effect to COVID, learning loss. We've been saying learning delay here, because there has been learning, but it has to be addressed toward learning loss, including summer school. In fact, a good percentage must be assigned to summer school, and it's over a three-year span. Items to prepare schools, reopening, educational technology is an allowable. Issues with social emotional challenges that have been due to COVID, which would fall in the category of, for example, counselors and SEL services. Learning challenges to special populations due to COVID included in that could also be work with reading specialists for the read-to-achieve legislation. And you can do some things with air quality, but if it were, for example, chillers that were planned prior to these funds coming out, they can't be used to go back and backfill on that. But I know that Ms. Renaud will give you more detail, but that's sort of a high-level overview. It's not really a blank check. It can't really take the place of other projects.
And I think the general public and other elected officials in the county need to realize that, as with all federal funds, I assume this has to be supplemental. It may not supplant any existing funding.
That's exactly right. We have to be sure that we are not supplanting at all. And, you know, the state makes sure that they monitor. We have to fill out all kinds of evaluations to show that, and present documentation to show that we are not supplanting.
It's also important to note that any, any plan that we submit is subject to their approval, and they do hold the authority to say you can't do that, even if it's something that we feel is in one of the allowables in the expenses.
Aubrey, this is Kenzie. Could you, could you print this stuff out and let me come by and pick it up a couple of days?
This PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I certainly will. In fact, I can give it to you tonight when you leave.
And whatever on the ESAR situation, so that I can peruse it at my leisure and become, become a qualified expert.
I'll be happy to share that with you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
I don't see any questions, but thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of work to get all that ready, and we appreciate that, plus the added work of the ESAR funds. And so we are waiting, we do have to have approval, but we anticipate receiving the approval and all that we need because summer school's not far away.
That's correct. Speaking of, that's a good segue. Thank you. Curriculum, OLP, and Summer School Update. We have Directors Ms. Norris and Ms. Ellen Berger to give an update on curriculum, the Online Learning Path, and the 2021 Summer Learning Program. And I will turn it over to them.
Okay, good evening. This is Carrie Norris, K8 speaking. And curriculum has been very, very, very busy this year, as you might imagine. So Missy and I wanted to make sure that we gave an overview so you guys can kind of see some of the things that are happening this year, and then the plan going into next year. And I did, we will print out this slideshow. We also attached our email, just in case you need to ask us more questions after this. Okay, Slide 2. All right. So the update for K5, where we are and what's going on. So right now, we have a reading diagnostic tool, which is called iStation, and we actually are using that for reading and for math, K through 5 this year. DPI has been working on a selection process for possibly a new tool. We're not sure yet if that would be iStation or another vendor. So we are just waiting on that release. But what I will say is that I'm a big believer in streamlining processes. So my hope is whatever we have for K3 from the state, I want to go ahead and adopt that for 4th and 5th grade also, if it applies. It helps the teachers to have the same language and also use the same measures as we're looking at reading growth. It's been really exciting this year. I've had a team of, right at 16 teachers and also instructional coaches going through a math adoption. We have, I think our last math adoption was six years ago. And so we have met probably six different sessions. We took our choices down from four, and we narrowed it down to two. We've had many, many webinars with these companies. And actually, Friday was our official vote, and it was unanimous to go with a program that's called Envision. This is formerly Pearson, I believe. Really important that this math program is, what I say, it has green marks, and that's on EdReports, which evaluates many, many different programs on rigor, teacher prep, quality of differentiation, just many, many different areas, and it has great ratings for that. So that's just a process ongoing. Both programs that we were looking at were very similar in price. They were both right at $200,000. And whenever I say $200,000, that is for five full years, consumable workbooks, also full digital access. So again, the vote was taken on Friday, and we went with the title of Envision. So more to come on that math leadership team and how we use that for next year. We have talked before at these meetings about social studies standards. We have new standards coming out. What we are waiting on now for many different areas are unpacking documents. And so the teachers have the standards, but we need a lot more detail. And so the teachers have the standards, but we need a lot more details and different resources that DPI will give us, which helps them to kind of create their, their lesson plans and also see what other additional resources they need to support that. So hopefully that should come in the month of May is what is being announced. So along with that math team, you know, I've really worked hard to try to create some leadership teams. I'm a big believer in teachers learning from one another. So we have a reading leadership team. We have a math leadership team. And then next year, we'll have social studies, a science, and special areas team. So I'm really excited once the land of COVID subsides a little bit next year. These teams will be, have, they'll have subs funded through me, and we'll be going out into the schools to, to visit classrooms and just see the awesome things happening so we can all learn a little bit more from each other. That's the big overview for elementary, continued elementary. So you may have seen in the news, there's been lots and lots of bills and laws being signed in the past few weeks. An exciting one was signed on April 9th. It's called the Excellent Public Schools Act. And it directly affects elementary because it talks more about something called the Science of Reading, which you guys have heard me say before. I just did brief little bullets there on what it is. It is not a program. It is just understanding the research behind how students learn to read, explicit phonics. Teachers will be trained through DPI vendor that's yet to be determined. Kind of looking at our block more and assuring that we are opening up and having enough time for explicit phonics and also incorporating writing instruction a little bit more into our ELA block. I did actually attach a few links there. Ed NC, it's been really exciting because we have an Ed NC reporter, Rupen Fafario, has just kind of chosen Transamini County to kind of embed into the school system and learn with us as we go through this process. So once you have access to this slideshow, you will be able to read a lot of articles which feature many of our teachers. So it's been awesome to be able to read about their quotes and the things that they're learning and the questions that they have. So I think anytime we can shine the spotlight on our county in the Western region, that's pretty exciting. Okay? Middle school? Okay, middle school update. So just like elementary, same thing, trying to develop those teacher leaders. We actually have created pacing guides, which I'm really excited about. And remember, a pacing guide just to help to assure that all standards can be taught within a school year. It does not mean that we want to create cookie cutter classrooms and expect every teacher to do the exact same thing at the exact same time. We don't want that. Our teachers are so creative, and we want to embrace that. But this is to help teachers just with their pacing for an entire school year. So we have that for science, social studies, math, and reading. And then next year, I want to actually spread out and do some things with foreign language, chorus, music, some of those areas, band, that I haven't worked with this as heavily this year. Same as elementary, still waiting on those unpacking documents, which will again, give us a lot more information behind the social studies standards and how we can teach those to students. Okay?
What does unpacking documents mean?
It is actually a document which will have the standard. But then under the standard, the unpacking document will identify vocabulary and resources and suggested topics to use to hit that social studies standards. So it's kind of like, almost like a little glossary to go along with the standard. So for a, the high school curriculum update, I'll start off with social studies because we will be teaching, implementing two new social studies, two of the new social studies standards courses into our curriculum next year. And that's going to be the new civics course and the new world history course. So this summer, June and July, I have a, a team of teachers coming in who will work on curriculum development for, for those two courses. And then as we move into the next year and phase in the other social studies courses, we'll do something similar with that. So we'll be working on that. We, we too are awaiting the unpacking documents and the supporting documents that will go along with that. But we've got to really move on this since we will be teaching it in August. Restorative practices, you've, you've probably heard that term. And it's something we're really going to try to push at the high school level next year. It's, it's not terribly new. Teachers do this every day anyway. They check in on students. They try to build a community and develop relationships. But this is just some, some professional development and some real strategies that can be used to help teachers do that. We want to look at developing core curriculum, teacher leadership teams for our math, English, and science. We'll start that with social studies this summer. And then this, this coming school year, we'll also be doing benchmarks again. Those formative assessments, just so teachers can use that to gauge where students are, what are their specific learning gaps, and develop strategies to meet those kids where they are. So we'll use the NC check-ins for Math 1. And then we'll go back to the case benchmarks for Math 3 and Biology. And I'm meeting with some English teachers later this month to look at Common Lit. There's been some discussion around the assessments that it can offer for benchmarking. And if that, if that doesn't look feasible, then we'll go with Case 21 again. Okay, moving on, shifting from curriculum into summer school. As Dr. McDeeris said, we are going to have a robust summer school this year, kindergarten through 12th grade. That is exciting. I will not lie. It's been a lot of planning and work, but we are getting there. And Mr. Griffin, at the last meeting, we were fully staffed. I think right now, we have one or two spots that have opened up for various reasons. But it's not anything that I'm concerned about because as we look at student numbers, we can condense a little bit. So still feel really positive about where we are with staffing. K through 8, schools are going to be pumping for five solid weeks, 150 hours. Our plan has been approved by DPI. We just got that notice today, so that was exciting. We are required to teach certain subjects. You can see those listed. Something that's different about this summer school is just that we are going to have some enrichment activities offered, spice it up a little bit for students so they are excited to come every day. And it's not just drill and kill on some different skills. Also having that social emotional learning support. We'll actually have a full-time school counselor being able to row between the nine schools, or any supporter, even like many PD, assisting teachers with the restorative circle, like Missy talked about, just anything above and beyond as we need for SEL support. And summer school for 912 is, is going to look similar. We did send those invitations home to students and families on April 26. Admin teams have been busy calling families where students may have struggled this fall or behind in credits. So they've been making many, many phone calls. Our session dates are listed there. Again, we'll have just over 150 hours of, of instruction that we will have available for students. Specifically, those in of course subjects, access to modules and teacher support for credit recovery, especially for those students who are, are not on track to graduate with their peers or be promoted to the next grade level. And then in-person instruction for elective courses and some credit recovery there, as well as the STL support.
Missy?
Yeah.
And your calculations, what is, what percentage of the kids do you feel like, or you may not have this information, that are not on track to graduate any more than years in the past? Would you have an idea what we're talking about?
So roughly, this doesn't exactly answer your question, but about 5% of Rosman High School students failed two or more classes in the fall. And that's, that's across all grade levels. That doesn't mean that, you know, it puts them behind not being on track to graduate, but that's a significant number, I think. And then 16% at Bivard High School. So really, our focus in summer school is going to be getting those students in that failed two or more and working on some credit recovery. So I don't, as far as comparison in years past, I don't have those exact numbers, but I could get them. I could get them for you.
Well, I guess what I'm really thinking about with those numbers, at Bivard High, then we're talking about 84% are doing okay and on track. And I forget how many did you say was behind at Rosman? I always like to look at the positive numbers. I mean, 84%, it's, that, after what we've been through, you know, it sounds like we've done a pretty good job. And same thing at Rosman High. So that, that was my main concern. If that figure was like 40 or something.
Yeah.
But.
No, yeah, yeah. And that's just a testament, really, Mr. Griffin, to, you know, the teachers going above and beyond, like we know that they do. But just going that extra mile to show a little grace and help students learn grit and, and meeting students where they are. Just, just they've really gone above and beyond. And the admin teams, the number of home visits that they've done and, you know, phone calls they've made just to let folks know that we care and what can we do to, to help you get through this. So I think that's why our numbers, like you said, when you look at it from the other standpoint, 84% and then 95% at Rosman, that, that's pretty amazing.
And a lot of this will help with summer school, I would assume, if those, if those students are willing to take that option.
Yes. And I'm meeting with admin teams on May 6th because students are supposed to let us know by May 5th. But numbers are coming in already, and, and it looks promising. It won't be everybody, of course, but I, I do think, I think we're going to be in good shape.
Thank you.
And then, go ahead.
Okay. So TCS, the Online Learning Path, just a quick overview of what our numbers look like. Numbers are, are significantly down. I think that's exciting. You know, we're still offering this for students who, this is the best learning opportunity for them. But also, our kids are coming back into the building, which is really exciting to me. So you can see that right now, we have 37 countywide K-5 students that want to do the Online Learning Path, which is three teachers. And then 30 middle school students, three teachers. And we have 29 high school students across the county, which we can't really break that up into teachers because they teach sections as opposed to being fully online. So we have about 16 different sections that TCS teachers will teach. And then we'll utilize NCVPS as well. Also, for all three levels, we plan to have on-campus visits planned for each quarter where those online students come into the building, possibly the media center, meet with the counselors face-to-face, see the admin team, talk about academic progress, SEL supports, just so they stay connected with our school system and don't feel like they're on their own island. Carrie, did you want to add anything to that?
No, that sounds, that sounds great. You know, we're excited about the, the visits on, on the school campus, spread out to be able, like Missy said, to connect and be able to do some different things with them. Just a little bit more expectations for the coming year for OLP.
I realize it's because of the number of grade levels being covered, but we are putting a tremendous amount of resources at the elementary and middle level for 67 students.
And let me actually clarify the middle school, Mr. Kevin Emi, because as of yesterday, actually, instead of three teachers, it will be actually two. And that's because our 7th grade only has two students. So, you know, still resource, but the number is from five for elementary, middle. And what I will say, and I've talked to Dr. McDeeris about this, you know, number one, having this as an option has been really nice this semester. We had a student with a health issue just a month ago that needed to be at home. And so I was easily able to move them into the, the Online Learning Path. Whereas before, it very well could have resulted in a student, just a parent, getting a homeschool code and having to homeschool themselves. So as we think about our, our numbers in the school system, having this as an option going forward, I think will be a positive thing. And I think as we, as we come out of the pandemic and COVID, I want to keep looking about what did we learn from this? What are some new things in education we can do, rather than going back to kind of the way that we've always done things?
And Mr. Kevin Emi, one thing we have to also realize is we're in a competitive market. And the state has started two online charter schools. And there are segments of parents across the state that the, the virtual online is something that they want. And so our system, like many systems, are trying to make sure that we have opportunities for all interested parents so that they do not choose other sources that I would consider not up to our standards. But nevertheless, it is an option.
And I will say also with the numbers, elementary is really tricky because we are bound to the class size mandates. That doesn't matter if you are in-person or online. And so actually, my first thought for elementary was to have two teachers, K-1, 2, and 3, 4, 5. We couldn't do that because our 3, 4, 5, third grade is part of that. And the numbers there put us into over the class size mandate. So that resulted in the three. So thinking about those scenarios, and it's very possible that the following year, the numbers could grow in teachers or could definitely diminish based on numbers. That was a lot of information. Any questions for Missy and I? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. How does assigning the teachers and the effort we're putting into the online program, how does that impact the in-person teaching?
Let's see. So we actually, at one of our schools, has, have reduced population for the next year, numbers. So it was actually a position that we were able to move into online versus losing that teacher. And the other teacher positions, two of those are actually through ESER funding. Part of that was responding to COVID and being able to offer that new opportunity. So some of that is related to ESER funding. So this will not throw any face-to-face teacher into a, a high number of students in their class.
And, and just to add, at the high school level, you know, I talked earlier in the year, we wanted to try to eliminate those blended sections where a teacher was having to do face-to-face with online students. And so we have been able to, been able to do that, to, to eliminate the blended sections. And so it could be that a high school teacher may have two face-to-face classes and one fully online class, but there won't be any blended. So I'm happy about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron, did you have another comment?
No, no, no. I just thank you ladies for your time. I know you've put in a tremendous amount of work in trying to get this up and running for summer school on such short notice after that leg, legislation that was passed in the General Assembly. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just join Ron in thanking you. I know it's a lot of work, and I, and I knew this already. But just to, to comment again on taking what we learned from what this last year has brought us and moving it forward into something good and exciting for the students and the teachers is good to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, I wonder if we might take a quick recess before we start the rest of the agenda?
Sure. We will take, we'll be back in here and ready to go again by 8:30. How's that? We will take a short recess.
Pardon?
No option for here.
No option for here, he said.
Well, there is an option for here. We would just, depending upon how many people would want to attend, if there were speakers, we would have to rotate them at the door because I, I did want to try to maintain even on a three-foot. And then you're going to be, that would put you back up here and that was up to the board on how comfortable you are being in close proximity up here. And then out there on the spacing, you have to leave so many seats in between and then you have our presenters, since it's not a meeting like on this format, they would need to be in here to be able to present. And so your numbers, the press would also be here. So your numbers sort of fill up. We would have more people in here than we have now, for example.
Well, you know, at the last meeting, I mentioned, I think it'd be good if we got out into the community. And I think the opportunity to go to Rosman High Middle School and go to Bivard High School and the Media Center, just especially in the, with everything, we're getting ready to start as far as construction, everything, being able to give an update to the people that are there and in the communities and things along this line. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind doing that. I mean, you know.
We, we used to, we used to do that. And I will say, and, and also to follow up on Mr. Jackson's inquiry, it, it is my hope and, and belief actually, that at some point, I'm going to say relatively soon, based on the trajectory, that the governor may reduce restrictions even more. And that would then free us up to go back to just having our regular meetings in here like normal. But I, I also don't think it's any harm, because the board used to do this, you may remember. It was very common for the board to have a meeting at Bivard and Rosman once a year anyway.
Well, I don't object to doing that. I think it's a good idea and on the thing, but at times we may want to come back here. And I think that's possible.
I agree with Dr. McDarris. I think when, as restrictions ease a little, we will be back in the, in this room. I think it would just be maybe not quite there. I think it would be kind of nice to visit those two schools because they're getting ready to change a lot and we won't be able to be there probably for a while. So I think it would be a good opportunity to be there and be in those communities and over the next few meetings.
Right. In fact, I would like it if we started with our next meeting on May 17th.
Which school would you like to pick between Bivard and Rosman?
I'm not going to go there.
I'd say Rosman. Then we can go look at that dang gym in the.
I think. Before we make a decision like that, though, we need to be sure that the media centers are available and what would be most practical. So I don't have a problem with Rosman at all, but let's just be sure, let Dr. McDarris and Jenny check and be sure which one might be available and most practical.
Let's make it a tentative decision, subject to his, in looking into it.
So tentatively, we'll say Rosman for the next meeting, and I will confirm with Mr. Ormsby and Mr. Strick to make sure that there's nothing going on there.
Right.
Is that okay with everyone?
And then the first meeting in June will be at Bivard High School. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Well, I was just wondering if, if we could get back in here, if you want to have maybe the first meeting in June here and then go to Bivard High for the second meeting. But that's, that'd be up to Madam Chair, but.
Oh, well, no, it's up to everybody else. But I'd say we just stay in the, the schools if we can for now. And then when we get eased back up, we'll.
Yeah, and it depends on what's going on. For example, tonight, and if you add in the press, we, we could have had the potential to had 10 or 11 additional people inside this room. So it, it, it actually can fill up in a hurry based on having some minimal social distancing. Now, when they release social distancing altogether, I shouldn't say social distancing, the correct term is physical distancing. But when the recommendations, you know, uh, physical distancing are lifted, it comes to midpoint after that.
Well, Jeff, we could have two up there, kick Chris out and put Tony and Ron up there, then we could have four, two at this table and two at that table. And the rest of the room would be available for other people and it could be done.
I would also want the board to keep in mind that you may initially, your screens, it's public record, but as we're presenting initially on your screens, if you are not up here, anybody can see what's on your screen. Just keep that in mind.
Say what?
The angle of the, just keep in mind that if, if you were still, if part of the board was sitting out there amongst the audience, people could see what was on your screen. Now, that may not be an issue, but I just feel like I need to make sure people know that, you know, open, you know, it's a, it's public record. And so.
Could always do that.
Yes.
So I think for the next couple of meetings, we're all satisfied.
Yeah, let's do the school.
To go into the schools. So let's do that and then we'll see where it moves us after that time. Chris is going to shoot me all the way from his office, but I think we also.
One other thing I have to say, we could consider the county commission chambers. They, they are full back letting people in. When you were there, you, you saw how it was arranged. And we actually had planning board meeting there on Tuesday night with seven board members and people in the audience. Worked out good. And the electronics are excellent.
And one question, just to piggyback quickly, Dr. McDarris, do we have the technology to broadcast from the schools, the meetings?
We can do it, we, we can broadcast as a Google Meet and Mr. Whitlock, we can use our graduation cameras to broadcast.
Yeah, what we would, I think what we would like to get away from in an in-person meeting is having to do this.
Right. If any board member is not physically present, then we have the legal obligation to broadcast the entire meeting, meeting over the internet, be it through YouTube or Facebook or, or however. So you wouldn't have to continue to do this. If all board members are present, most boards are still looking at a broadcast situation right now just because of capacity limits. That if you can't squeeze everybody in quite yet, you would still want to do some kind of minimal broadcast. So you, the board members would not have to do this, but if any board member is remote, we have to broadcast that meeting over the internet. So I just want y'all, if, if a member couldn't make it, then we would be in a situation where legally we'd be required to. So I just wanted to put that out there.
My thinking, you're correct. And my thinking with those two locations is they're large enough that we could accommodate.
Whoever wanted to come.
The public one coming as well.
We just need every board member to come.
We just need every board member to come.
I started to say, if by chance we find that a board member's not going to be available as long as, as long as it's early enough to publish it, we could come back in this room and do the meeting like this.
You could, or you could try to make arrangements so that, you know, a lot of districts are looking at wide-angle cameras with a single microphone. If somebody stands there and points and they're putting the entire meetings on YouTube and things like that. So you could look into other options just to get it on the internet.
Haven't we already done that?
We have before.
Yeah, I had a meeting from, uh, Motor Beach and then, and you had a meeting, I forget where it was, that, that we weren't able to attend, we were online. We have done that in the past.
Okay, I understand that subject, that unless we hear different, we're going to meet at Rosman High School on the 17th. Everybody agree?
Yes, that's correct. But I think what we're trying to determine now is, are we going to ask Chris to do a way that we can broadcast that meeting?
We, we can also provide an audio recording of the meeting too.
So do we want to ask Chris? Go ahead.
I guess the first question, Madam Chair, is just, does, does any board member already know that they would not be able to come to the meeting in person on the, or does everyone think they can be there in person? If, if everyone can be there in person and we've got enough room to, to let members of the public come, then we're fine. It's only an issue if a board member can't make it and wants. member can't make it and wants to remote in. And I guess we can cross that bridge when we come to it. Don't need to decide tonight. Mr. Whitlock and Dr. McDarris can work on that.
Okay. So we will plan on having our next meeting at Rosman High School and we'll be looking forward to the, to being there.
All right. That will bring me to superintendent's update. Sort of my first statement, just to make the board aware, just to piggyback on the online learning path. Last, last week was busy in legislature, particularly late in the week, and I'm assuming it will be this week as well. One of the many bills that was filed this year, and it was in committee, had some surprising legislation, at least to me and to fellow superintendents, because it in essence, Senate bill was seeking to limit our traditional public schools from offering remote instruction through virtual academies, such as our online learning path. It also places limits on the number of remote learning days. Now, we'll know they're still at five. However, if you meet the minimum number of hours for instruction, that becomes a little bit of a moot argument and we would be fine. I say all this because it's interesting that this is being proposed in light of winter weather in the mountains and hurricanes along the East Coast. For example, some of my colleagues on the East Coast have had, not had a normal school year in five years. It's perplexing to me to know that this mode of learning would be at question because it's not only here to stay in education, it is used by community colleges, it's used by universities, and it's used in the private sector for training and education. In a world where one of our many tasks responsibilities is to prepare students for the future, it just seems to be an odd piece of legislation. I will also note that there is another bill under consideration that would allow charter schools to offer as much remote and in-person instruction as they want at the same time. I will note, however, that late last week, because this was in question in committee and it has to go committee to the full Senate floor and then from there it goes to the House. So it may not happen, but as a precautionary move, I, I and some, many other school systems, because they had a May 1st deadline in there, where if you did not have a remote academy before May 1st, you wouldn't be able to have one if this legislation passed. So on Friday, I applied for a school number through the state for our online learning path, and it was assigned by the end of the day before May 1st. So if we need to, we have a school number for our online learning path and we will be able to offer that. If you were unable to watch last night's 60 minutes, I don't know if any of you saw it, it may be worth pulling it online to watch. There was a lot of different conversation about COVID and other things, but the part that I'm talking about was about semiconductor chips. It's very interesting to me. The discussion about semiconductor chips was how that shortage really poses some potential dangers to the United States. The program looked at the growth of that risk as it pertains in specifically to China, who is a major manufacturer and also consumer of chips. Intel provides some chips, but to the United States, of course, but also to China. These things are in everything, folks. They're in your cars. They're not just in your computers. They're in your cellphones. They're in everything. And they even had a discussion of why China might be very interested in Taiwan, for example, because Taiwan makes a lot of semiconductor chips. I'm bringing this to your attention because a variety of factors have converged to make the coveted computer chips very scarce. Soaring demand coupled with supply bottlenecks have led to a situation in which orders for everything from cars to televisions to touchscreen computers and more are on the backup for six months or more. With semiconductors at the core of so much of the U.S. economic activity, the ongoing supply problems are likely to have a ripple effect. The program's subject matter, to me, highlighted by digital expertise and computer science are fast becoming must-have skills for all schools to have in place for students. And we'll be talking about that further on. Another item I'd share with you, data from the 2020 census is being rolled out with more revealing analysis. The U.S. population over the last decade grew at its slowest rate since the 1930s. According to the New York Times, over the past decade, the United States' population grew at the second slowest rate since the government started counting in 1790. There were also changes to the nation's political map, the longer running trend of the South and West gaining population, and the congressional representation that comes with it continued at the expense of the Northeast and Midwest. Texas gained two seats, North Carolina and Florida gained one. New York and Ohio lost one, and surprisingly, California, long time a leader in population growth, lost a seat for the first time in their history. And my final bullet point of interest tonight, there are four weeks of school remaining in the current school year. Specifically, there are now 18.5 school days left. It's been quite a year, not that anybody's counting. That's my update for this evening. That will bring us to important dates.
Well, let me ask you a question that you just mentioned. How would this affect, maybe I misunderstood. How does this affect our winter days as far as being able to go online and everything when you were talking about the change of.
Well, if it were to pass, we would have five of those. But the other part of legislation, the law itself also says that school system, you may remember a number of years ago, they made a very important distinction on the number of days and hours. It used to say days and hours. Now it's days or hours. And we have enough time built into the calendar that we would meet the hours if we had to add in some extra virtual days. We would be okay, in my opinion, unless we have.
They're going to give the charter schools all the virtual days they want, and we might need six because of bad weather and we wouldn't be able to have that sixth day. We could only use five, correct?
In essence, that's what it would be, but we would be okay, I believe, Mr. Griffin. Now, the winter of 2009 and 10 was, was quite the winter. I think we missed 22 days. You get into that sort of level, it could be a problem, but I, I still think we'd be okay in a general winter. But I did want to alert the board on that. And we do have a new school code for online learning path.
Do we still have to take the practice virtual days before we actually have some? Like, was that not last year that we were told we had to have X amount of virtual days before we could?
Oh, that's been changed with this legislation, too. Stay tuned. We don't know what's going to come out of it.
Thank you.
Yes. You see important dates there. I'll call your attention to three very, four very important ones. The Davidson River School graduation on May 27th, that will be at the Biltmore Church, Brevard campus. May 28th is the last day, and you see May 28th, Brevard High School graduation, and the 29th, Rosman High School. And that is the weekend of the Memorial Day holiday. So that's very nice timing. And you see, we have some dates going up into the 19th. Yes.
Do we normally attend those graduations?
Yes, sir.
School board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll say one other thing while I've got the floor. I'm grateful there's not a meeting on July the 5th. That will allow me to be sitting on a screen den line observing the Gulf of Mexico, which I would have been doing tonight, except for this meeting.
I understand. As every year, May's the reminder, it's the timeline for my annual evaluation. Policy 7805 Superintendent Evaluation states that the board has the responsibility to maintain and improve the quality of the administrative leadership of the school system. The primary method used to carry out this is to assist the superintendent in improving his or her effectiveness. To this end, the board annually evaluates superintendent according to a process described in Policy 7805. The following timeline is a recommendation. It's up to the board for the 2021. This is in line with previous years. On June 21st, I would provide a self-assessment to the board. At some point prior to July 19th, the board chair and vice chair would meet with me to discuss the self-assessment. Also, prior to July 19th, the board members would complete and return individual evaluations to the board chair, vice chair. July 19th, board members meet in closed session to prepare a consensus evaluation. And then on August 2nd, the board meets with the superintendent in closed session to discuss the consensus evaluation and agree upon performance goals and recommendations for the next school year. That is an information item. And the board certainly has the right to change those dates to, to their benefit. And that is all I have for this evening.
And that will bring us to a time for other items. Are there other items from board members? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for that vote. Courtney?
Aye.
Marty?
Yes.
Ron?
Aye.
Kimzy?
Mrs. Toni, yes, we will consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you, everyone.